Hi, everybody. We need to get our meeting started, so I would ask everybody to please take a seat. And you'll have time to socialize in exactly three minutes. But for now, I'm calling the meeting to order. This is the January fourteenth meeting of the Board of Education of Hillsborough Township. We are in a -- well, roll call, please.
Sure. Ms. Bogaczewski?
Here.
Ms. Santafonte?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley? Mrs. Lay? Mr. Pulsifer? Ms. Wasson?
Here.
And Mr. Kintz? We have a call.
Thank you very much. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on January ninth, two thousand thirteen, to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier-News. Whereas, the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two thirty-one of the laws of nineteen seventy-five, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section seven B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough in the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey as follows: A, the matter to be discussed is revised two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen goals of the superintendent; and B, the matter discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. So, we will be stepping out to the school library for about twenty minutes, and we'll be back at seven thirty. Thank you very much.
May I have a motion to go into close?
So moved.
Thank you. Second, thank you. Again, we'll be back around seven thirty.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Good. We're good to go.
We're in close.
Okay. We'll be calling our regular meeting to order. Again, first, we'll start with a roll call. Mr. Mahmood.
Ms. Bogaczewski?
Here.
Ms. Santafonte?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley? Mrs. Lay? Mr. Pulsifer? Ms. Wasson?
Here.
And Mr. Kintz? We have a call.
Thank you. I'd like everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America, here's what we remember. The wish of the nation, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Correspondence was received from a number of people: Karen Hoffman, Danielle Greco, Christopher Lenzo, Joseph and Mary Beth Lucash, Toby Cansegor, Donna Jeffrey, and Catherine Payne. We can move on now to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. It's so exciting to see so many friends here tonight. Are you excited to be on TV?
Yeah.
Yeah? Are you excited to be on TV? Yeah, you're gonna be here, you're gonna be on TV tonight. We have some friends from Amsterdam School here, as well as from Sunny Mead. And first, I think we're going to have our friends from Amsterdam School share with us a little bit about what they learned concerning water conservation. So it's my pleasure at this time to introduce our principal of Amsterdam School, Mrs. Maryann Miletie.
Good evening, everyone. Today, we're very excited to share with you one of our integrated projects that we're doing with Technology and Social Studies. And I'd like to introduce our fourth grade teacher and our computer teacher, Ms. Ashley Davies, and Ms. Jean Torenzano.
Have you ever wondered just how much water you waste waiting for your shower to heat up? Or how much water disappears down the drain as you brush your teeth each day? The fourth graders at Amsterdam School asked the same questions while studying the properties of water. As they explored the water cycle and investigated the water purification process, our students began to wonder: How can we conserve our planet's most precious resource? The answers they found were truly astonishing. So, it is with great pride that I introduce the fourth graders from Ms. Davies' class, showing us that every drop really does count.
Hi, we are a group of Amsterdam Elementary School fourth grade students from Ms. Davies' class. We are happy to be here tonight to share our water conservation projects and to show you that every drop counts.
We have been learning that water is a precious resource that must be conserved by everyone.
We brainstorm-wise conserve water in our community and at home.
Across all the Amsterdam fourth grade classes, there was something we noticed in common. The majority of students suggested we can conserve water in our own homes by controlling the amount of water we use to shower.
We use Google Spreadsheets to calculate how many gallons of water we use for a typical shower. In as a class, we learned a lot from the results.
Hello, my name is Gabriella Gioli, and this is a website that I created to show how we learned that just a drop can save a lot.
Hi, my name is Julia Cristiano, and I would like to introduce and recognize my sister Caitlin Cristiano, who is a seventh grader who volunteered her valuable time to show me and my friend Gabriella how to make a Google website when we wanted to learn at home.
I decided to create a website about our class' water conservation projects and to share the activities we did in the classroom and at home to learn about how much water we use and how we can begin to save on our own.
Hi, my name is Ava Luwanka. To start our water conservation unit, our teacher challenged us to research water conservation and make a poster showing ways to conserve water at home and in our community. When students presented their posters, many interesting ideas were shared.
Here, Gabrielle made a list of many great ideas. Some of them are turning off leaky faucets, turning off the water when you brush your teeth, taking shorter showers, leaving a bucket outside when it rains, and watering your plants with the rainwater, and so on.
Hello, my name is Darren Kinsler. We took a class poll to find out what the most popular water conservation ideas were. We made pie charts out of Google Spreadsheets and were surprised to learn that most AMS fourth grade classes included the same top two suggestions in their posters: Take a shorter shower and turn off the water when brushing your teeth.
All of the classes shared their pie charts into Google Drive, and I inserted the charts into my webpage, so we can compare the results.
As you can see, taking a shorter shower and turning off the water while brushing your teeth are the largest fractions or biggest percentages of each class pie chart.
Hi, my name is Allison Carkey. Using a sample spreadsheet of average shower use in America, our teachers challenged us to predict how many gallons the AMS fourth grade class could save by taking two minutes
Using Google Spreadsheets, our teacher showed us that if the average shower goes at three gallons a minute, and the average shower in America is eight minutes, based on the EPA website, then the average person uses two thousand five hundred gallons per year to shower. But if they took two minutes off the shower, then the average shower would only use one thousand nine hundred gallons. That would save six hundred gallons a year per person, even if the average person only showered two times a week.
Well, since we have one hundred fourth grade students at AMS and one hundred students times six hundred gallons each equals six hundred gallons, our class predicted that AMS fourth grade could save sixty thousand gallons a year, even if we just take two minutes off our showers.
But when our teacher asked us if our showerheads are in water at the average three gallons a minute, and if we all take the average eight-minute shower, we all said, "We don't know." So we agreed that we would take the water challenge and gather data to find out how much water comes out of our showerhead at home, and we would record how long we typically shower.
After collecting and recording our data at home, we spent a science class entering our results into a shared-class Google spreadsheet.
I inserted both our teacher's sample spreadsheet, showing the amount of water used for an average shower in America, and our class spreadsheet, showing our actual individual water use data in my website. We all looked at the data together, and this is what we discovered.
The first thing we discovered is if that you look at the column for gallons per minute, most of the students in our class have showerheads that only use two point five gallons per minute. Our teacher pointed out that this is less than three gallons a minute used by the average household in America.
We then read an article about the EPA Water Sense Program. The main idea of the article is that the water conservation program recommends three specific ways people can save water in their homes.
Check, twist, and replace.
For replace, we learned the Water Sense Program recommends replacing older showerheads with new ones that only allow two point five gallons per minute. You could buy these showerheads at Lowe's, Home Depot, or even online. Just look for "The Water Sense Label."
We concluded that since most of us live in newer houses, we already conserve water by having newer showerheads with two point five gallons per minute. But a few people also learned, like Student Ten, Student Four, and Student Sixteen, that they could save more water if they follow the EPA Water Sense suggestion and replace their showerhead.
We also discovered that many people in our class take longer than the average eight-minute shower, and our teacher showed us that Google Spreadsheets can use functions to calculate the averages for our class. The average shower length in our class is seven and a half minutes.
Our teacher used Google Spreadsheets and showed us that if we assume we all have water-sense showerheads and shower seven and a half minutes, we would use a total of nineteen hundred gallons a year to shower two times a week. If we took two minutes off our shower and showered only five and a half minutes, we would use only fourteen hundred gallons a year to shower two times a week, and that would save about five hundred gallons a year each.
Here we go again. Five hundred gallons times one hundred AMS fourth grade students equals a total of fifty thousand gallons a year.
Remember, we predicted that we could save sixty thousand gallons a year if we take shorter showers? Well, since most of us already use less than three gallons a minute, we learned we can still save almost fifty thousand gallons a year just by taking shorter showers.
Wow, when we filled our buckets to measure how much water comes out of our showers a minute, I don't think we really knew how those minutes of water would add up.
We learned that our fourth grade class's suggestion to take shorter showers for conserving water was a really smart one. We learned that our suggestion could really make a difference.
After realizing our class was not only already doing a great job conserving water, but really good at coming up with splashing ideas to conserve more, I added a discussion form to our website, where our class continues to brainstorm ideas for new products or ways to save even more.
For example, I couldn't wait to share the preheated shower idea my dad and I came up with. We designed a showerhead using Insta-Hot to warm the water and make it ready for showering in only thirty seconds, so people don't run the water longer than necessary.
As you can see, our classmates are also blogging about new products, like shower sensors, so showerheads don't run without people in the shower.
Thank you for taking your time to hear our presentation, and remember that EPA says, "Just a drop can save a lot." And we learned that a minute or two added up for us and can add up for you too.
This was very, very impressive. I learned a lot about water conservation. I didn't believe that just a few minutes less than the shower could save all of that water. You taught us a lot tonight. Thank you. And it was so impressive how you were using technology, using Google Spreadsheets and collaborating with all your pie charts and doing the discussion board that you did up here. Very, very impressive. Let's give our friends from Amsterdam School a big round of applause. Thank you so much.
I would like to especially thank Ms. Davies and Mrs. Torenzano for helping me and encouraging me to make this website. It was very kind of them to be part of my website. I would also like to thank Ava, Julia, Allison, Patrick, and Darren for spending their time to help me present my work.
We would also like to thank our teachers and each other for helping us.
Thank you again. One big round of applause for our friends from Amsterdam School, teachers, principals, and especially for our students. Thank you so much. Second on the docket is another group of fourth grade students from Sunny Mead School, and they're going to share with us their art presentation, their projects on work of famous cubic artist Pablo Picasso. So I'd like to invite up the principal of Sunny Mead School, Ms. Tammy Jenkins.
Good evening, everyone. It is with great pleasure that I introduce to you our art teacher, our very talented art teacher, Mr. Ari DeLucas, who's here with seven of our awesome fourth grade artists who are representing Sunny Mead School. All right, well, thank you very much for bringing us here today. Often in the art room, we think about pens and pencils and crayons and pastels, but often, especially with the new initiatives from the district, we're certainly trying to include a lot of technology, and I certainly try to do that as often as possible. Some of our fourth grade students had the opportunity to bring some of the technology in and have a lot of fun. We also included writing as well. I came from the classroom before I became an art teacher, so I try to infuse it as often as I can. And so I'd like to bring up the Sunny Mead fourth grade students right now, so that they can present their artwork and present a couple of animated ditties that they did First up is Grace Sang and Madison Silvestri.
Hi, my name is Grace. I am a fourth grade student from Sunny Mead Elementary School. My project mainly focused on the artwork of Pablo Picasso. Did you know that he was the father of cubism? What's cubism? Cubism means to take common objects and turn them into geometric shapes, such as a square, circle, triangle, and many more. My partner Madison and I started our project by drawing an asymmetrical balanced face. It has a side view of a face looking at the side. The materials we used to color were oil pastels. Since we were coloring on black paper, we had to push our oil pastels really hard in order for the bright colors to show. Afterwards, we went on GoAnime.com to create a short video. This short video was an animation about two characters talking about Pablo Picasso. One of them asked the questions, the other answers them. One part I found really difficult was typing in the username and password. Since the username and password was really long, it took us several tries before we could log in, but after we were in, we found nothing difficult. The part I liked best is that you can change the accent for each character. In fact, you could even make the characters talk in different languages too, such as English, Chinese, and many more. Well, we chose to stick to English, so that everyone in here can understand. I hope you enjoyed my presentation. Thank you very much.
These two were a team, so they're gonna show their video in just a second.
Hello, my name is Madison, and I'm a student from Sunny Mead Elementary School. My project focused on Pablo Picasso, who used cubism in his artwork. We first started our project by drawing a face that had one side looking forward, which is called a full face. The other half, called a profile, was facing sideways. We used different materials to create this, such as pastel. After that, we used GoAnime.com to create a scene with two characters included. We first had to write down what each character was going to say. The part that I found difficult was trying to find the perfect colors to combine for the asymmetrical face. This is because some colors would not look good together. The part that I liked best was creating the dialogue for the characters. One of them asked a lot of questions about Pablo Picasso. The other one is the person who answered them. This is our project, and I hope you like it.
I'm a gigantic hippo. How are you doing?
I'm doing fine. I just saw some red fish in the water. Their faces look really strange and demented. I asked them what happened. They said that Lopez was a painter of their faces.
Who is Pablo Picasso?
According to the fish's explanation, Pablo Picasso is the father of cubism.
Does that mean he could make lots of cubes?
No, it means to take common objects and turn them into geometric shapes. It is sort of like taking puzzle pieces apart and putting them back together. It uses asymmetrical balance.
I wonder if Pablo Picasso is still here? Maybe he could make my face look different in a new way.
That is not a good idea. You're already ugly enough. The fish says that he was born in Spain. That's miles away from us.
What does "miles away from us" mean? They took some creative license with the editing there. Next up is Matthew Reger and Cole Semeneki and Orion Patel. Okay, that's the next group of three.
Hello, everyone. My name is Matthew Reger, and I am a student at Sunny Mead Elementary School. My project focused on the artwork of Pablo Picasso, who is a brilliant and special artist with great talent. We first started our project by drawing a sketch in our sketchbooks. We drew a profile connected to half a face called an asymmetrical picture. We used pastels to make our sketch. After our sketch was complete, we used GoAnime.com to make a digital movie using two characters in a humorous and factual way about Pablo Picasso. The part that I liked was, in the end, seeing our hard work paid off when we finally got to watch the movie. I enjoyed learning about this interesting and skilled artist. It would not have been such a great project if not for my wonderful art teacher, Mr. DeLucas. Thank you, and I hope you enjoy the movie.
Hello, my name is Cole Semeneki, and I'm a student at Sunny Mead Elementary School. My project focused on the artwork of Pablo Picasso. You know, he was the best cubism artist in the twentieth century. We first started our project by drawing two faces called full faces and profile faces. The material we used to draw our project with was oil pastels. Outlining the faces in white created contrast against the black paper. Afterward, we used GoAnime.com to make dialogues for each character in our animation. The part that I found difficult about the project was dealing with all the minor issues and typing the dialogues all over again. The part that I liked about this project was having fun and being successful.
Hello, my name is Orion, and I'm a student at Sunny Mead's Elementary School. My project was on the artwork of Pablo Picasso, a famous cubist, which is an artist who paints cubism. He was born in eighteen eighty-one and died in nineteen seventy-three. We initially started our project by drawing full faces and profiles on black paper. A full face means an entire face, and a profile means a side view of a face. The materials we used were oil pastels and pencils to draw out the face. Afterward, we used GoAnime.com to make our script and make the video after it was edited. On GoAnime, we pictured in characters, their voices, emotions, and put them in our script. We watched the video at the end and thought it was satisfying. The part to me that was difficult was that we had to restart twice, because the computer kept closing the screen before we hit save. Otherwise, everything was pretty straightforward. I liked GoAnime the most, because it's like we made our own thoughts into a real movie. I especially liked the characters, because we had an option and we could change their voice and emotion. I mostly liked the entire process.
Wasabi man, I love sushi. Have you ever heard of Pablo Picasso? He is a famous artist that was born in Spain in eighteen eighty-one. Well, FYI, I am Pablo Picasso, and I will tell you stuff about my life, though I am a famous cubism artist. OMG, I don't know much about you. Can you teach me some stuff about you? I never tried painting reality. I turned things in my paintings into sushi. Just kidding, basic shapes. What is a full face and a profile? An asymmetrical balance? What is that? A full face is an entire view, and the profile is a side view. An asymmetrical balance is not equal or the same on both sides. Tell me more. I want to learn. Now. Okay, okay. Well, cubists simplify their subjects by turning them into basic shapes. Up, 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 at Picasso style. Well, that was kinda dumb.
Okay, well, talk about technology. They're presenting from their pads here. So that's where they're gonna be reading from, so. There you go, Dr. Schiff. First up is Allison O'Neill.
Hello, my name is Allison O'Neill. I am a fourth grade student at Sunny Mead Elementary School. My project focused on the work of Pablo Picasso. Pablo Picasso was the father of cubism. He was also the artist of the twentieth century. We started our project by drawing a full face and a profile. The materials we used were oil pastels and pencils. After we used... Afterward, we used GoAnime.com to make a video about Picasso's life. The part that was most difficult was coloring the picture with oil pastels. Mr. D worked us very hard. The part that I liked was making the video on GoAnime. I loved this project and I would like to learn more about Pablo Picasso.
Good afternoon, my name is Lauren Nelson and I am a fourth grade student at Sunnymead Elementary School. My project focused on the artwork of Pablo Picasso. He was the father of cubism. We first started by drawing a profile and full face. The material we used to draw was oil pastels and pencils. Afterward, we used GoAnime to create a video on the artist Pablo Picasso. The part I found difficult... The part I found difficult was using the oil pastels. The part I liked the most was making the video on GoAnime. Also, making the dialogue and choosing the theme music to put it together sure was fun. It is a pleasure to present our video to the Board of Education. To be chosen out of 74 graders, I wanted to get this opportunity and when Mr. D had said that we had got it, I was so excited. I hope you enjoy our Pablo Picasso video.
What's up, Baloney?
Hello, Bubble Buddy. Who is Pablo Picasso?
He was the father of cubism. He was born in Spain in 1881. He was one of the greatest artists of the 20th century.
Cool, that's awesome. Tell me more.
Okay, he was not trying to paint reality. He did profile and full face.
We see two different faces, right?
That's right. His work was asymmetrical. That means it is not equal or not the same on both halves. It's not the same if we cut it down the middle.
It was called cubism. I'm guessing?
Yes. Now, by I'm feeling violated to pop, the world was at an end.
Cool, by then.
Sunnymead students worked really hard and if we could just give them one more round of applause, I'd be glad. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Wonderful job from our friends from Sunnymead School. Big round of applause for all of our teachers and students from Sunnymead as well as from Amsterdam School who came out tonight. You know, every month we have a Spotlight on Students where we try to highlight some of the great things that are going on within our district. And this was very impressive, very impressive indeed. Thank you so much to everyone who came out tonight, supported your children, and did a great job. I ask our board president and our board to take a brief five-minute recess and so that we can thank the children personally.
We're having a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready to reconvene our meeting, albeit with a lot smaller audience. And we are now going to have a presentation by our science supervisor, Kim Feltry.
Good evening. I extend my thanks to the Hillsborough Board of Education for granting me this opportunity to speak to you tonight about the Next Generation Science Standards, which are national standards much akin to the Common Core State Standards. The second draft of the Next Generation Science Standards was released on January 8th, 2013, for public review and comment. After the public review window closes on January 29th, the Next Generation Science Standards will be revised and the final document will be released in March 2013. Mike Kine, Science Coordinator for the New Jersey Department of Education, indicated that New Jersey will review the final document and determine adoption this summer. Implementation will likely be two to four years from adoption to provide the opportunity for the necessary professional development for teachers, curriculum revisions, and resource adjustments to support the Next Generation Science Standards. There were 26 lead state partners that collaborated on the development of the Next Generation Science Standards, including New Jersey. The Next Generation Science Standards were created for the states, by the states, in collaboration with the National Research Council, the National Science Teachers Association, the American Association for the Advancement of Science, and ACHIEVE. A little delay here. A Framework for the K-12 Science Education, the book in the lower left of the screen, provided the blueprint for the development of the Next Generation Science Standards. The framework expresses a vision of science education that integrates three dimensions of learning: science and engineering practices, cross-cutting concepts, and disciplinary core ideas. The Next Generation Science Standards identify a limited number of disciplinary core ideas that all students should learn with increasing depth and sophistication from kindergarten through grade 12 in the context of science and engineering practices. Combining science and engineering practices and disciplinary core ideas promotes student understanding of scientific and engineering ideas in the context of specific content. The eight practices of science and engineering are: asking questions for science and defining problems for engineering; developing and using models; planning and carrying out investigations; analyzing and interpreting data; using mathematics and computational thinking; constructing explanations for science and designing solutions for engineering; engaging in argument from evidence; and obtaining, evaluating, and communicating information. The seven cross-cutting concepts are not intended as additional content and are meant to give students an organizational structure to understand the world and help students make sense of and connect core ideas across disciplines and grade bands. They include patterns, cause and effect, scale proportion and quantity, systems and system models, energy and matter in systems, structure and function, and stability and change of systems. The continuing expansion of scientific knowledge makes it impossible to teach all the ideas related to a given discipline in exhaustive detail during the K-12 years. The goal of K-12 science education is not to teach all the facts but to prepare students with sufficient core knowledge so that they can later acquire additional information on their own. There are a limited number of disciplinary core ideas both within and across disciplines in order to avoid the shallow coverage of a large number of topics, in order to provide time for students to engage in scientific investigations and argumentation and to achieve depth of understanding of the core ideas presented. The Next Generation Science Standards are not student... I mean, are student performance expectations, they are not curriculum. Even though within each performance expectation, science and engineering practices are partnered with a particular disciplinary core idea and cross-cutting concept, these intersections do not predetermine how the three should be taught in the curriculum units, the curriculum, the units, or the lessons. They simply clarify the expectations of what the students will know and be able to do at the end of the grade or the grade band. In the future, science assessments will not assess students' understanding of core ideas separately from their abilities to use the practices of science and engineering. They will be assessed together, showing that the students not only know the science concepts but that they can use their understanding to investigate the natural world through the practices of science inquiry or solving meaningful problems through the practices of engineering design. The Next Generation Science Standards makes connections to the Common Core State Standards for English, Language, Arts, and Mathematics to ensure a symbiotic pace of learning in all content areas. The three sets of standards overlap in meaningful and substantive ways and offer an opportunity to give all students equitable access to learning. Integration of subject areas is an avenue that strengthens science learning for all students, particularly for students who have been traditionally underserved. The Next Generation Science Standards offer rich learning opportunities for language learning at the same time as they support science learning. Engagement in any of the scientific and engineering practices involve both scientific sense-making and language use. Science is a quantitative discipline, which means it is important for educators to ensure that students' learning in science coheres with their learning in math. To achieve this alignment, the Next Generation Science Standards Development Team worked with the Common Core State Standards in Math Writing Team to help ensure that the Next Generation Science Standards do not outpace or otherwise misalign to the grade-by-grade standards in the Common Core State Standards in Math. The Next Generation Science Standards look different than the current science standards. The current science standards include a content statement, which is the knowledge students should acquire, an accumulative progress indicator, or CPI, which is what the students should be able to do for each strand under the standards. There are four standards divided into a science practices standard and content standards in physical science, life science, and earth system science. Curriculum was written to incorporate both the practices and content into each unit of study. The Next Generation Science Standards' performance expectations are in the top white box. The three foundation boxes are color-coded for the three dimensions of learning: science and engineering practices, disciplinary core ideas, and cross-cutting concepts. The white boxes at the bottom denote connection boxes and reveal connections to other grade-level disciplinary core ideas, to disciplinary core ideas at other grade levels, and to the Common Core State Standards for English, Language, Arts, and Math. The Next Generation Science Standards group the disciplinary core ideas into three major domains: the Earth and Space Sciences, the Life Sciences, and the Physical Sciences, acknowledging the multiple connections among the domains. More and more frequently today, scientists work in interdisciplinary teams that blur traditional boundaries and to reflect this, core ideas or elements of core ideas appear in several disciplines, for example, energy and human impact on the planet. The Next Generation Science Standards are organized to illustrate how knowledge and practice must be intertwined in designing learning experiences in the K-12 science The Next Generation Science Standards have been developed in learning progressions. Short narrative descriptions of the progressions are presented for each disciplinary core idea in each of the traditional sciences. These progressions were used in the college and career readiness review to determine the learning expected for each idea before leaving high school. The standards are organized by grade levels in kindergarten through fifth grade. The middle and the high school standards are grade-banded. For the purposes of this draft, a set of model courses for middle school and high school have been developed to initiate discussion in an effort to reconsider the Committee of Ten's alphabetical alignment of science generated in the 1800s. The academic rigor and expectations of the Next Generation Science Standards are less familiar to many science teachers than typical teaching practices and require shifts for science teaching, which are consistent with shifts for teaching the Common Core State Standards for English, Language, Arts, and Math. To address these demands, NSTA will be hosting web seminars exploring the Next Generation Science Standards and their implications for science education. All web seminars are archived and are free. The Next Generation Science Standards are open for public review until January 29th. The New Jersey Department of Education's Office of STEM will be disaggregating feedback provided by New Jersey residents and the findings will be included in the state's deliberations regarding adoption. The final Next Generation Science Standards will be released in late March and New Jersey is currently targeting determining adoption this summer. I would like to acknowledge that the sources for most of the information in this presentation were NextGenScience.org as well as the web seminar hosted by NSTA on January 9th, which incidentally was attended by 750-plus people across the nation, myself included. Thank you for your time. Good night.
Thank you very much, Ms. Feltry. A very comprehensive and interesting presentation on our Next Generation Science Standards. And I know that it is the hope of you and other educators throughout the country that these standards will actually increase the rigor and help us to become more competitive as we compare ourselves to other industrialized worlds. Thank you very much again for your presentation.
Thank you.
At this point, we have one final presentation and that is a presentation that I will be giving about consideration I'm going to ask the board for in terms of moving the school board election from April to November. And if you just give me a quick moment, I want to set up and project my presentation. Just hold on for just a moment. Thank you so much for your patience. Last school years, many of you may know, New Jersey allows school boards to change their elections from their typical April election to November. And in moving the vote, there would not need to be a vote on the school budget as long as the school budget presented to the voters was less than 2% increase of the tax levy from the previous year. An overwhelming number of school districts have taken advantage of this, over 90% throughout the state. Hillsborough, Montgomery Township were the only two school districts in Somerset County that chose not to move their school elections to November last year. Reddington was the only school district in Hundreden County that chose not to move it last year. Reddington has now, I think it was in November, they will now have their next school board election in November, chose to move the vote. And Montgomery in December also chose to move their vote as well. Last year, I was neutral on this particular issue. I felt that this was something that the board should consider, the pluses and minuses of either. However, now going through it for a year, I do have a recommendation that I'd like the board to consider to move the vote to November. And I have a brief presentation to look at the reasoning why. In terms of why we should move the vote to November, first and foremost is voter participation. In this past election, and I'm throwing up a chart, it has a lot of information on it, but what this chart shows is what percentage of registered voters participated in both the presidential as well as the school board elections in this past November. This chart lists all of the school districts in Somerset County that chose to move their school board vote. What we see, especially on the bottom of this page here, is that 68% of registered voters participated in the election for the president. Also, 68% of those who participated, of registered voters also participated in the school board vote as well. What that means is that the overwhelming majority of people that chose to vote for the president also voted down the ballot for school board members as well. It was close to 70% voter turnout for this last presidential election. Voters. So close to 10 times the amount of voters participated during the presidential election. And given the data that we've just reviewed, we could have anticipated approximately that many people participating in the last school board election. Now, this was a unique election, it was a presidential election. The election the year before, which is the November 8th, 2011 election, was an off-year election and voter turnout was quite different, only 28%. You can see on the bottom of the county there, 28%. Hillsborough was 25% participated in that election. When we look at the election the year before, we see approximately 43% participated in that November election. 39% participated in Hillsborough during that election, both considerably more than what we have seen in school board elections in the past. Another reason why I suggest we should consider moving the vote is that we want to be able to attract the very best and brightest teachers to attract the very best and brightest teachers, professional staff, non-certificated staff, to our district. This is an issue of timing for us administratively. Currently, my colleagues in other districts that have moved the vote have completed their budget process in late March. We won't be able to complete the budget process until mid to late April, and that's if the budget passes. If the budget fails, it then goes into late May. So, in many ways, and especially now that we will be the only district in two counties to keep the election, if that's where the board wishes to go, and the budget fails, we are approximately two months behind the time that we can offer contracts to potential employees in our district, while other districts are able to offer those contracts and secure their personnel. Another issue that involves the calendar is our ability to maintain competitive in pricing for when we send things out to bid. When you know what your budget is, you can begin to put your bids out for construction projects and other things. We, again, would have to wait until May or late April in order to know exactly what our budget's going to look like, and that delays the process of offering bids for following summer work. And the longer that you wait for those bids, the possibility that those projects will be more expensive in the future. The next issue is cost. Holding a special election or a school board election in April is at the board's expense. Our most recent election costs, which are the 2012 election costs, are over $20,000, about $20,640 and change. This is what it is this particular, this past year. Next year, because Montgomery is no longer going to be a part of it, we then bear the full share of the county costs for the election. We contacted the county clerk's office, and they asked us to budget $15,000 for what was $9,500 this past year. So, we anticipate costs from the county will go up at a minimum over $5,000. The county board of elections costs also is expected to increase. That's that $3,900 number. We don't know exactly how much that would increase. So, approximately $5,000, possibly more, in increased costs. And currently, our total election cost was $20,648. Another reason why I would suggest that we want to take a look at it, take a look at changing, is that not having a date certain when we know what our budget is going to be puts us, rather inefficiently, at taking care of some of our administrative work. If we knew what our budget was going to be in late March, then we can begin doing the work and setting up for the next school year, keeping my focus and the focus of other top-level administrators, not on budget development or changes in the budget, but on instruction and implementing the educational practice. We, again, may extend our work that we're doing with budgets two more months than what other districts are doing who have moved the budget vote. I also want to spend some time talking about why, the arguments that I have heard from the board and from others about why we should keep the vote in April. The first and probably most compelling reason is that the vote is fundamental to our democratic form of government. No one wishes to take away anyone's right to vote on a budget or other things. That being said, however, very few people have participated in our school budget election. Going from 7% to possibly 20, 30, 40, even 70%, voter participation actually is an argument that democracy is increased when you have much more voter turnout than you have when it's so small. Another argument that I've heard to keep the vote is that this also is one of those other measures to help the board become fiscally responsible and accountable for the public. But what's very interesting, and I'm not sure a lot of people know this, is that New Jersey is the only state in the entire country where we have annual audits, elected boards of education, and executive county superintendent of schools that can redline budgets, that can actually take monies out of budgets, end a 2% cap on the levy on top of that, plus a school board election. No other state in the country has that level of cost containment in there. And that was one of the reasons why the legislature and the governor considered the fact of not having a school budget vote if the board chose to stay at or below cap. And finally, one of the other arguments that I heard was the concern about the school board election becoming highly politicized, because it would be part of a partisan election One way that our legislature is resolved to combat anything like that is that within the New Jersey Board, the New Jersey School Board Code of Ethics, it states very clearly that it is a violation of the code to surrender judgment to a political party or any special interest. It actually is a requirement for school boards, different than other elected bodies, like your municipality, your county, your state-level government, which is partisan. School board members are nonpartisan, and they are restricted from surrendering their judgment to political party or special interest. School boards are the only budgets that are, that people vote on, with the exception of a very small fire district budget in this state. We do not currently vote on municipal, county, state, or federal budgets. We vote on the representatives to those bodies to make those determinations about whether or not their fiscal planning is appropriate. It's only school budgets that we see that type of voting. So, in my analysis, my professional judgment, when we look at finding the balance between whether or not we should keep the vote in April versus moving the vote to November, my recommendation to the board is that we move the vote at this time. Our next level of work on this is that our operations committee will discuss this in committee, and it will be made available for board consideration at our next public meeting. I'm available for any questions at this point.
Any questions from the board on the superintendent's report? Comments? Hold off for next meeting?
[inaudible]
Okay. Very good.
That's all I have for my report.
Thank you very much. I guess we can move on to approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes for December 7th and two sets of minutes for December 17th.
10th and 17th.
10th and 17th.
10th and 17th, sorry.
What was that?
I'm not well. But be that all as it may, I'd like to entertain a motion for the minutes of December 10th regular session. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any questions, comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we're good. December 10th executive session, motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Good. December 17th, regular. May I have a motion? No?
No.
So moved, Lorraine.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Thank you for making that so clear. And for the December 17th executive session?
[inaudible]
Motion and second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
No, he's swaying.
I said it more gently the second time.
Okay. Okay, we've gotten through that torture. Now, we're up to public input on the 2013-14 school budget. Are there any comments from the public on the budget for next year? Whoa, seeing none. We move on to new business. Is there any new business from the public on any subject? Please state your name and location and your business.
My name is Betsy Skeel, and I live at 567 Southwoods Road.
My name is Jane Tong.
My name is Alina Devay.
So, for those of you who don't remember me, I'm on the high school robotics team, the RoboRaiders. And many times last year, James and I came to present updates to you on how the team is doing. But this year, since we were both actually elected into further leadership, we have come to present to you the people who will be giving you the team updates this year. So, I would like to present Jane Tong, who is our team, who is our new team secretary, and Alina Devay, who is our new team public relations manager. And they're going to present to you some things about what our robotics team has been doing.
So, as Betsy just said, my name is Jane, and this is Alina. So, to start off, we're going to give you a brief overview of some events that we participated in throughout the summer and then into the beginning of the school year. So, to start off with, in July, we held a summer enrichment camp at the middle school for fifth and sixth graders, where we taught them how to program and build Lego robots as used in the FLL program on the middle school level.
And then Team 75 participated in the Somerset County Forage Fair and the Hillsborough Rotary Fair, where we held interactive presentations. Then, the members interacted with all of the visitors and answered their questions pertaining to the process in which the robot was built.
In mid-July, we had another demonstration at the Intrepid Sea, Air, and Space Museum. We were part of an exhibition held by NASA, so it was a really cool experience to share our work with people from all over the world.
And then the RoboRaiders demonstrated their robot at the local Boys and Girls Club in Brooklyn, and then later in the Bronx. We also took a group of girls from the club and introduced them to new concepts relating back to STEM, which is also a wise initiative.
Then, on September 15th, we demonstrated our robot at the Cozoli Company picnic. The Cozoli Machine Company has been one of our biggest sponsors in the past two years, and we're very grateful for their support.
And then, on November 17th, Team 75 held their annual Borough Blast event at the high school. All of the local first, the first Lego League teams participated in this competition. Members of our team helped make sure that this event ran smoothly. Other members led a demonstration of our 2012 robot. Team 75 also invited the first technology challenge team to give a demonstration of their robot. Then, on January 5th, Team 75 ran their annual kickoff meeting, and now our six-week deadline has begun to build our robot.
So, that brings an end to the past events we wanted to bring to your attention. We do have one upcoming event that we want to bring up. On March 9th, we are holding a science fair at the high school. Anyone within Somerset County from fifth to 12th grade can submit. So, if any one of you are interested, or you know anyone that would be interested, we would appreciate you spreading the word, and a submission link can be found on our website, roboraiders.com. So, thank you for all your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that information to us. We appreciate it. Is there any other new business from the public? Is there any, are there any comments from either the board or the public regarding the action agenda? We'll start with the public. State your name, please, when you go to the microphone.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Dowd. Do I also do my address here, or no? In this town, do you do addresses too?
Just generally?
No?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, please.
24 Field Hedge Drive. So, I am new to school budgets, still learning, so you'll maybe have to just forgive me if my questions aren't appropriate, or if there's an obvious answer to it. But I was curious if any of you have done the calculations about what our school budget would be in 10 to 15 years with a consistent 2.5% increase, and what's the impact of that on the community? So, and then think about, too, is it appropriate to increase our taxes 2.5% every year forever while taking away our vote?
I could answer that. The board has not consistently raised its budget by 2%. In fact, there were a number of, there were a number of years where we were significantly under that. What this board tries to do, and hopefully has been successful in the past, especially in years where our budget has, you know, gone to the public and passed public scrutiny, we try to assess what we feel are the necessary expenditures for the following year and base our budget on that. I don't know if you want to...
I agree. I agree. I think, to answer you directly, have we looked at 15 years out in terms of our budget? The answer is no. When we develop our budget, we are looking, we have to make predictions about what our state aid calculation is going to be. We also have to make predictions about what costs may or may not be within the budget in future, in the future year. Currently, we're developing our budget for the 13-14 school year, and we are anticipating that health care could go up 15%. It is not uncommon that health care is increasing double digits. It's very difficult to address those needs with a 2% cap. This board has been able to do that, and has been able to do that at a time when we've been providing greater opportunities for technology integration in our classes, greater, or addressing facility needs on top of that, as well as providing additional professional development opportunities. So, I agree with Mrs. Haas's assessment.
Greg?
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. I just wanted to explain for the public, so the public can know, that the school budget is only partially funded through taxes. It's also significantly funded in Hillsborough by state aid. So, local property tax is only part of it, something like 75% or in that range, maybe a little bit more. And the rest, now, a few years ago, a much greater percentage of our budget was funded through state aid. But in one year, I think that was 2010, or 2009, 10, 2010, in one year, the state reduced our aid by $6 million in one year. That's difficult. And we had a significant increase in the tax levy in that year, not nearly to make up the $6 million, but it was significant. In other years, when the state provides more aid, we have been consistently increasing the tax levy as little as possible. So, it's just important to remember, it's not all just in taxes, it's also in state aid. It's a, it's a balance between the two that funds it, and it's very difficult, when you're talking about 10 or 15 years, what will happen to budgets. We can increase the tax levy 2% every year for the next 15 years, but if state aid decreases that time, during that time, our budget could shrink. You know, there was a time, I think we're just about now up to the same budget that we had a couple of years ago. Went down for a couple of years. Now, we're up to about that same level again. So, it's variable, it's very difficult to plan that, but I appreciate your question.
Okay. So, what I hear back is kind of like a, hey, trust us, right? And we should, because you're our elected officials. And it's a big responsibility that you have.
Let me just also make a comment on, hey, trust us. We have multiple meetings with the public where we present the budget, where we have, I think, in fact, for many, many meetings, we've asked for public input. It's part of our standing agenda item. We always welcome input on developing the budget. The budget is also published online, and it's done in the same format across the entire state, so that comparisons can be made. We also have a process that helps us to compare our spending per pupil against other districts as well. And that is public... And that is published on the Department of Education website. It's one of those metrics that the operations committee uses to determine whether we need additional resources in a particular area or less. So we, we use a variety of different metrics. But it's not about just trusting your elected officials. It's about us being transparent and communicating the details associated with that budget. We're not in, we're, we're beginning that process at this point. We anticipate that in late February, we will know what our state aid is. And then during the month of March, I, I do, I make many presentations. One presentation at every school as well as to, to local community groups, to our seniors, to our preschools. Also, there's a budget hearing that occurs at this dais as well. So there's multiple opportunities to get a good handle on the details of what we do with our budget.
Okay, good. Well, that's good to hear and hopefully I'll be able to attend them. I guess I bring up the issue of trust today too because this week, past week, one of my sons came home and he had a worksheet from Babes. I don't know if any of you are familiar with it. Something alcoholics and addiction for children. And he came home with this worksheet that had a picture of a cartoon kitten offering another kid cigarettes. And I thought, I don't want, my kids not exposed to this at home. I don't want them going to school and being exposed to it through the curriculum. And I thought it was just really inappropriate. So I hear you and I see you up here and I want to trust you. But then when I see what's coming home from my child, I think, I can't trust these people. And I don't know if any of you guys saw that same handout, but be happy to give you a copy of it. My first grader came home with a coloring book that had no signs with cigarettes in it and hypodermic needles and pills. And that's how the coloring book started. And how it ended is a bunch of people, like cartoon characters, acting like they're friends together. It's so confusing and it's not appropriate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming and presenting that to us.
Dana Blevins, First Vice President of the Hillsborough Education Association. Several staff members have approached me based on part of tonight's action agenda. It has been a long-time practice, if not policy, I'm not sure, that if more than one member of the district's teaching staff wants to attend the same off-site workshop or conference, only one person is given approval and then asked to come back to the district and turnkey the information learned to the rest of the staff. These staff members that approached me noticed, as did I, that on Section A1 of tonight's action agenda, eight administrators slash supervisors are being approved to attend the same conference, the TechSpo 2013 in Atlantic City. Included in the eight is the interim assistant superintendent, who is leaving five days after the conference. Since the cost for each member is quite a lot, since it is an overnight endeavor, we were just wondering if this is actually a prudent expenditure of money. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Antunes in just a moment. But there was an error in the backup and our interim superintendent is not, that our district is not paying for any of his fees or costs for that. That, that has been removed from the backup of the agenda. Dr. Antunes?
Actually Dana, it's been quite a while. Sometime, dependent upon what conference it is, we will allow one or two people to go. Typically, what I'll do is when we, like national conferences or state conferences, I'll just use, I don't know, art educators, because I've been seeing a bunch of them come across my desk. I ask Denise to take a look and see if the person requesting it had gone the year before. Because we can't send every art teacher in the district to the conference every year. But we try to do two or three per year. And if they've gone the year before, then we try to let someone else go the next year. And we do that with all of those kinds of conferences. So if you look back, you'll see that there are several teachers, in fact, I'd say more than several, that are often chosen to go to the same, they're not chosen, they request to go and the request is granted, to go to the same conference. Oftentimes, they go to different things when they go, just like the supervisors and, and we would do. Additionally, this year, we happen to be presenting at TechSpo, so we have people attending. One thing that I'm sure everybody has heard me say is that we expect our supervisors, our principals, our administrators to go in and observe our teachers utilizing the technology and assist teachers in doing so. Well, we can't hold an expectation if we don't provide the wherewithal, just like we can't hold the expectation for teachers if we don't provide training on how to incorporate this. So when we put all that together, we, you know, this is what we come up with. As Dr. Schiff said, he spoke to the interim assistant superintendent. Thanks.
Hi, Jody Morrison, 23 Crowell Road. I'd like to piggyback on that a little bit, if I may. We're talking about nine staff members who will be leaving during the day, during the school day, I'm assuming. Will there be any kind of coverage for them or in case we need them for anything in the district, since there's nine people missing?
We don't provide coverage for supervisors during, but we are all available via email and telephone constantly. So, but no, we don't provide coverage for supervisors.
Okay. And then I have another question on B, where am I? B10, if I may? One, two, three, fourth person down on B10, where it's group changes. I'm sure there's just a, something that wasn't added. It says, this is the group changes, so we're going from step NA to from NA to NA, but yet there is a $2,000 increase on the fourth person down.
You know what that is, Judy?
That's what?
We talked about who that was.
Go ahead, if you want to. Mr. Anka?
During the course of the year, we have staff members who move on the guide based upon accrued credits or longevity. And we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight staff members pursuant to contract who move on the guide mid-year.
Right, but this is showing no movement. It's saying NA, not applicable.
Which person are you talking about?
The fourth one down?
Yes.
So it's saying step NA, from NA.
To NA.
To NA, so. There's not showing any step movement.
It's a principal.
Okay, they don't have step movements? I don't know. I don't, that's why I was asking.
It's my understanding that is for credits and their contract, principals go off for credits accrued that they get payments after certain credits. But what I can do is I can get back to.
But to answer you directly, they do not have steps.
Okay.
Each one has their individual salary.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions from the public or from the board? I guess then we can move on to the action agenda. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you, Madam President. I ask for the board's consideration for the following motions under the area of education, to approve the professional travelator expenses. Reminder to the board that Attachment A1 had been changed, as discussed previously. To approve the HIB investigative list, the overnight field trips, the fiscal year 2013 NCLB amendment, and to approve for first reading the use of defibrillators policy.
May I have a motion for items A1 through A5? Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion among board members about any of the items in the education section of the agenda?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I also had, I also had an email from a member of the public about the professional travelator expenses. But my questions were answered, so thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
We were trying to get it up, sorry. The defibrillator policy.
Yes.
The only question we had was the last line where it says you had to be trained to use it, to get it. Right, it was to get it. And we were trying to figure, I understand the nurse checking it, that someone should be responsible for checking it. It was who could actually use it in the school bathroom. Because anyone should be able to actually technically use the device.
Yes, technically that, technically that is true. However, under, we have to have, you have to be AED, CPR and AED trained in order to utilize it. And every, and the CERT team, all CERT teams are all done that, all the nurses have done it. So most people are, yes, if there's an emergency and a community member needs to utilize that, it walks you through it, as you know, and anybody can use it. But for the policy for the schools, everybody has to be trained to utilize it.
I think it might be worthwhile for us to clarify that in the policy so that there isn't confusion. You know, because we do expect that if a child would get hit in the chest with a baseball and need the use of a defibrillator, an untrained person could in fact get it and use it to say, to, you know, assist the child or stuff. I would just add the word staff member, who can do that during the next reading.
If I may chime in, because I think Lorraine and I may be remembering the same thing. When we start, started putting defibrillators in the schools, a lot of them were donated by HSAs and by the rescue squad and various other things. And I think the goal at that time was to assure that anybody using our schools as a community center should have access to the defibrillators. And there was discussion back then about whether they should be locked up in nurses' office. And everybody said, no, put them in a cabinet and make sure that they are basically foolproof, that you can't hurt somebody by using it improperly. So therefore, I also, when I saw that line in the policy about people having to successfully complete recognized training programs and having current certification, I was a little troubled by it. But even for staff members, I would be concerned about, about that because obviously in a cardiac situation, if you have the equipment and it can't hurt somebody, it would be important to act.
Typically, that is exactly what would happen. And more than, I'd say, 80% of our staff are trained anyway.
Say that out loud, because I don't think everybody knows that. And I think that's a terrific accomplishment.
It won't, it won't deliver a shock if the person doesn't need it. It literally, it doesn't allow, it disallows that to happen. So that is absolutely the case. Again, remember, the policy is to protect the board and the district. So that's why we want to keep that in mind. But certainly we'll, you know, we're going to get some emails and we'll get that settled.
Are we discussing it at the education committee meeting, I think, on Wednesday morning?
We could, sure.
Thursday morning.
Okay. Okay, defibrillator policy. And I also had a question. Does anybody else have any other questions?
No.
I also had a question about the cheerleading trip. Is that a new forum? Because it didn't indicate how many people were going and it didn't indicate how many chaperones were going.
Let me just look one more time, because I see so many of these.
Yeah, I know, but it seemed like it was a new forum. And it also seemed a little bit expensive. You know, all expenses were being covered by individuals and given the amount of money that was involved, I was sort of hoping that there was some funding available through the organization for those who can't afford that kind of trip.
Actually, this is a form that we, it's not new. We've had it for, it's at the bottom, it should say at the bottom, the year that we, since 2008. It was revised June 2008. So we've had this form and you mostly see it for sporting events or, and for overnight, stuff like that. Sometimes you'll see it for mock trial, debate, anything that's like an overnight like this.
But there's some other form that's floating around too.
And there's, there's two forms that they have to fill out because what was happening was people were putting in requests for reimbursement under a field trip request that was different over, above and beyond what was being approved by the board. And so to ensure that everything under accountability regs was done appropriately, we added this form for, as it says, athletic events and sporting events, stuff like that. So that, that's what that's about. Now, they provide us the information. If there's something missing, then Denise and I ask for it and we get it back. So whatever they have typically done is, usually, most of the spring training for things are done in Florida. This is talking about championships. So I suspect that they don't know if they're a part of it yet. It's possible that they are, I'm not sure. But nevertheless, these are, these are the costs that they submitted, so.
Right, but do we, do we know how many kids are going?
If they, if it's not on here, then we don't know to date. But I will double check with Denise, okay?
Okay, so seeing no further questions on the education section of the agenda, we'll have a roll call for A1 through A5.
Ms. Bogaczewski?
Yes.
Ms. Antifante?
Yes.
Mr. Gillett?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Swanson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration for the recommendations that I'm making under the area of human resources, to, to approve the resolution to create one transportation aide position as per Mrs. Johnston's recommendation. To approve the resignations as listed. To approve the retirement of Joan Arshin, who's one of our speech therapists at Hillsborough Middle School. She has worked in our district for 21 years and we thank her for her many years of service to the children in the community. Also, to approve the revised leaves of absence as listed, long-term substitute, rescinding of the contracts listed, approval of contract changes, leaves of absence, and approve the appointments of long-term subs, transportation aide, lunch aide, substitutes, mentors, and approve the days listed for interim assistant superintendent for personnel. Approve and approve group changes. That's all I have on that area.
May I have a motion for the human resources agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board on any of the items? No comments? Okay, well, I actually have one. And it relates to item number B9. We passed at our last board meeting, which was on December 17th, a resolution that stated that our interim superintendent for personnel was going to work from January 2nd through the arrival of our new assistant superintendent. And on this list, we have a number of dates in December, including a date on the Friday before our last board meeting. And I'm quite honestly upset about that. I don't think that's appropriate. And I would not be in favor of approving retroactive, retroactive dates when this could have been approved on December 17th. So I have a serious concern about that.
May I address the, the board for a moment? You are correct that the original motion started on January 1st. We, there was always an anticipation that, that Andy and Scott would have overlap in order to ensure that the transition between our interim and, and permanent staff was smooth. December 14th did occur before our prior board meeting, I grant you that. However, there was a unique training, which was the training for our new teacher evaluation model, which that position is required to actually move that agenda ahead. I felt that it was necessary that Andy participate in that training in order to understand the, the details behind the new teacher evaluation model. As far as December 27th and 28th, those were days that Scott was no longer working. Although his contract didn't, didn't end, there were two days during the, the break that, that Andy did work, did a, did a fine job during that time. And, and these were, were days that important work got done. In hindsight, and this is a lesson learned for me. In hindsight, and this is a lesson learned for me, to ensure that the start date for that person includes overlap and any other necessary time. But these are all bona fide days of work that Andy gave to the district. And necessary.
Any other comments? Greg?
Yeah, I'll just comment briefly for the board and the public that we have come to board meetings and approved, you know, start date positions and things after the person has already begun working, for whatever reason. Sometimes it's necessary, so it is done. But in this case, this isn't exactly that case, because we approved... I was not at the meeting, but on December 17th was the date of the approval. And as Dr. Schiff just indicated, it would have been very easy to have the 20th, 21st, 27th, and 28th, have those dates in mind and have the board aware of those dates beforehand. I don't think it's that huge, because we do do things, you know. We have to run the districts, you know, you have to run the district smoothly. And sometimes board meetings don't coordinate with all you have to do, I understand that. But in this case, I think it could have... So I think you understand that, so...
I agree. It was an oversight of mine and in the future it would be corrected.
I was actually under the understanding that his training was going to be pro bono.
No, that was actually... Guy Whitlock, who's actually in our audience, currently participated in the training during the...
No, I knew about it.
During that particular period of time.
Yes, I thought they both were.
No.
No?
Any other comments on any other items? Okay, I would like to separate that one out. So I will take a motion... Well, I'll take a motion on everything B1 through B10.
Excluding B9.
You want you separating B9?
What's that?
You separating?
Yeah, with the exception of B9.
All right, so moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Antifante?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Okay, and Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And now a motion on B9.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
No.
Ms. Antifante?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Haas?
No.
And Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
We'll need to get a ruling whether or not we need five or the majority of the sitting board. I'm not certain in this particular case, are you? You need five?
You need five, you need a full majority of the board for contract.
Okay. So we're going to have to return to the board on some of this particular issue, whether or not it is fully exclusive of any compensation of any days or if there is another consideration or adjustment for the board. But we will need to return to this particular motion at the next board meeting. I don't want to surprise any of the board members to define clarity on what we can and can't do. So we'll have a modified agenda item.
Okay, we move on to the operations section of the agenda. Do you want to recommend the operations?
Just very quickly, I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations. Approve line item transfers, approve the warding of transportation routes, rescinding of transportation contracts as listed, accepting a donation from the Hillsborough Rotary Club of 532 dictionaries for third graders. And we do appreciate our Rotarians in the community. Approve the facility project, which is the exterior sign replacement at Hillsborough High School and the modification of the fire suppression system there as well.
Okay, do I have a motion for the operations agenda? Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the operations agenda? Lorraine?
I read with interest the proposal about the sign at high school. And it is absolutely needed. I didn't know anywhere if it was going to be a one-sided sign, like the current sign, or a two-sided sign, like the one that was put in at many of the schools, HMS most recently. I think at that corner, it would be useful to have the sign visible from multiple places, the current sign being, and especially since it's so far away, which is what Ms. Bingert's memo really stated, that it's only really going to be visible by people who are stopped at the stop sign in front of the school. It won't be visible from people stopped on the other side of the intersection. Nor will it be visible for people coming north on Raider Boulevard. So I just wondered if that was considered. I didn't note that in there when I was asked the question, thank you.
I'm not certain.
I'm not sure if the sign is on both sides. The digital, I believe, Ms. Wasson, it's one side, but I'll get clarification on that. We need to get clarification.
You bring up a good point, because the HMS sign is on both sides, but you can see it from both sides. The high school thing, you wouldn't really be able to see the back of.
Unless it was actually...
Although all those kids in the math wing would have a good time watching it all day, I'm sure.
Right, unless it was actually a V-shaped sign, so that you could see it from both sides.
I don't think it is. Definitely it's not a V-shaped.
Then there's a flat one. And a big one. Yes, Greg?
Mr. Mahmood, can you clarify for the public and the board that that sign is just about as big as we're allowed to make it? Because that would be the next question, like, why isn't it bigger so more people can see it?
We, yes, Ms. Gillette, we actually, it's... We were able to work with the township and the sign itself is definitely within the boundaries that we were allowed. The town was very gracious with us. There are a lot of parameters that they worked out with the school district. But at the end of that, we were within all the legal rights that we couldn't put up the sign. But they were also very flexible, because they knew that it's in a really, a great location for the town and the sign would be used for multiple purposes, including for community outreach, as well as student-oriented messages as well. So it was a multifunctional sign. And it's going to be very useful for the town, so I think the town was just very gracious with us.
And it's just about as big as we can make it within the ordinance?
Guess it is.
I mean, they have some flexibility.
Yes, a little bit bigger.
But it couldn't be twice as big or something like that. This is a...
It's as big as they can be.
Yeah, we've waited a long time for this sign. We've been talking about this for three years.
I think it's .6. This is where he less than the ordinance is. So I think it's as big as it can be.
It was on the board.
The orientation and do it on two sides.
I think you're still going to have that three to two. You know, I wouldn't support that, but if you want to go ahead, go ahead.
Doesn't matter.
What?
If we're not going to have five, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, right. So... What you want to call it? I guess, were there any other questions on the... Any other questions on the operations agenda? Okay, I guess we have a roll call.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Antifante?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yep.
And Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Do we have any further public comments? Do we have any old business from the board?
Madam President?
Yes.
May I just clarify a question that came from the audience? Because I pulled up the HPA contract and there was a question about the $2,000. And the question indicates that after an individual earns a total of 15 applicable credits, they do receive a salary adjustment of $2,000 in either February or July. So I didn't want to leave the meeting with that unattended.
Okay, thank you.
I think usually in the backup, if you don't mind, Madam President. Madam President.
We're all friends here, right?
Usually in the backup material, we would have some... An indication in there exactly which, that it was plus 15 or something in the backup material. I think that's what Mrs. Morrison was referring to. That may have just been an oversight on our part, because all the other ones, except for that one, clarified what the increment was for. We're all familiar with, and I think the public is also with increments for continuing education, whatever. But I did have another old business.
Go for it.
This was Dr. Schiff. Dr. Schiff, we've been talking about the prospect of revisiting the calendar, the school calendar for 2013, 2014. We've been... I know you've been working with the county and the township with some idea of changing our polling places, with recovering the November election day as a school day and possibly making some other changes to the calendar. Do you have any sort of an update? The public is getting anxious on this, and I think...
Sure.
I would like to hopefully be able to vote on this in two weeks' time.
I would hope so, too. But as you're aware, and the public may be aware, the changing of that calendar is dependent upon the idea that we can move polling places out of the elementary schools into the high school. Pam Borwick, who is our municipal clerk, has submitted a letter to the County Board of Elections asking them to consider just that. Moving all of the polling places out of the elementaries, and ARIS, by the way, and putting five polling locations at the middle. There's currently four. And five polling locations at the high school. She will be following up with them in about a week or so, knowing that we have another meeting scheduled at the end of January. However, according to either law or administrative code, they have until March to let us know one way or the other. So I think we're doing what needs to be done.
And if I could follow up real quickly, if you don't mind. Just so that for the public that's trying to plan vacation times or whatever, someone emailed me or, I think emailed, I don't remember, maybe I ran to them at ShopRite, I don't recall now, this week, they said, "Is there any possibility school is going to start earlier than Friday, September 6th?" And I said, "You have to come to a board meeting, I can't talk to you." But actually, I said, "I don't think that's..." From my recollection, that was, had not been one of the options. Could you pretty much assure us that that will not be one of the options, to start earlier than September 6th?
It's not the option that we spoke about at education. We spoke about not starting that Friday and then coming back to school the Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday prior to teacher convention, which is typically that week of the election. So again, it's dependent upon whether or not we can move that vote or if the timing of this becomes an issue, the Education Committee may contemplate coming in the Monday and the Wednesday of that week, not knowing what that Tuesday is going to be, and having a firm start date. But it gets very complicated when we don't know and we keep on making those changes.
The first day of school to the following Monday. But we're never considering any options to make school start earlier somehow, like...
We did, though, we did. We talked about doing the Wednesday as the first day, so that Friday would be the second day of school.
Well, we need at least two days of staff development as part of the new teacher orientation. So we need the Tuesday and the Wednesday prior to the beginning of school in order to comply with those training requirements.
That answers that. All right, thank you. I'm done for the night.
Actually, yeah, Lorraine?
Just to clarify, we did discuss it. The... But Dr. Schiff is correct that in order to get the training that the teachers will need, that would depend solely on negotiations. So we didn't think that the timing would work to have that information. And, you know, obviously, that is something that we... That the negotiation committee will take up with the union. But that was probably not going to happen.
Probably not going to happen, right?
Right.
Low likelihood.
Right, but I did want to bring up one additional thing, because the Education Committee, when we had this discussion about potentially moving the elections and the clerk moving on that, as Dr. Schiff said, that was prior to Sandy Hook. And I did make a comment that by moving the elections to the high school, you remove the issue of elementary school students being lured out by strangers that might be entered into our school. But it would not, in fact, stop gunmen. And we talked about whether or not the library doors would be locked and secured so that people coming in to vote could not enter the high school. I think that is a real issue. That we have to... We have to be able to make sure that our children are safe. And so I think that when we consider these things, we really need to make sure that people cannot enter the school to gain access to the students.
I would like to add to what Lorraine said. I don't really think the library is a good place at all. I think it would be better to have a room wherever where the public can enter directly from outside and not have to go into a hallway. And that, you know, doesn't exist in the library, whereas in gymnasiums, you are able to walk directly from outside, you know, from the parking lot right into the polling room. And frankly, I think the gymnasium is, you know, a much better choice in terms of logistics. I don't like the idea of all of our library resources being quote-unquote "open to the public" and, you know, to have to give up on library security, because not only do you have the regular building security on that side of the building, which also heads over to other wings of the building, but within the library itself, you would have to shut off all of the security measures to prevent people from walking out with property of the library. Or you would have to get all of that out of the room, which would be a ridiculous project for anybody. I would also like to comment on, I guess this is too much of a combination of issues, but if there is any thought about moving the school board election to November, I would think that it would almost be counterproductive to have that week off from school. Because most of the people who are school families, who have in the past been very much inclined to utilize that week for a school, you know, for a vacation, a family vacation, we would be sending them out of town just at the point where we're having an election for our school board. Just something else to think about, among all the other arguments to and from on this issue. But...
Absentee ballots.
Absent.
I do it every year.
You'd be surprised how many people remember it after it's too late to get them. But yeah, I mean, yeah, absentee ballots are an option, but, you know, it doesn't happen that much on school board elections either, so we'll see. Are there any other old business items? Any comments on any of the informational material? Or enrollment numbers, or fire and crisis drills? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. That always goes fast. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you for the public.